We're streaming, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, both online and in person. Does anyone have any disclosure of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none and hearing none. Our first motion.
Madam Mayor, the first motion reads, move by Councilor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated Monday, November the 9th, 2020 be adopted.
Would you call the vote?
Councilor Cook?
Yes.
Councilor Krebbitz?
Yes.
Councilor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And we'd like to welcome, we have two, well, a delegation plus a virtual delegation as well tonight. And so I'd like to welcome Warden Dave Mennel and CIO for the county Julie Gagnon. And they're going to make a presentation, which I believe is going to be streaming for them, on the service delivery review that the county did. That was, we received a grant to do it, and it was to look at efficiencies. And they're going to tell us about what they found out.
Okay, we have the floor, son?
Pardon me?
We have the floor?
We have the floor, and it's on the screens.
Okay, and you can, everyone hear me? I don't think there's any microphones, but not usually an issue with myself. So, good evening and thank you to the County of Elgin, to our meeting tonight, and about the county activities and let Central Elgin Council know some of the exciting projects that are going on in Elgin. We value our close working relationship with our local municipal partners and are happy to partner with Central Elgin on a number of joint programs and services we provide to the residents of our communities. Communication is important, and we are pleased to be able to share what has been going on in Elgin with you tonight. Council has just completed a strategic planning exercise, which has established clear goals and priorities which will guide the actions of the county council until the end of the current term in 2022. These goals and priorities have been developed to be responsible to the needs of our residents and partners who will guide actions and resource allocations moving forward. COVID-19 pandemic has been a challenge for all municipalities in Ontario and is no different in Elgin County. And I'm very proud of how our council and staff have been able to pivot quickly to continue providing service to our residents in a safe and responsible manner. Even more pleased at the way that the county, Elgin's local municipal partners, and the city have worked closely to ensure consistent response to rapidly changing provincial regulations and circumstances across the province. Despite the pandemic, Elgin County has been able to accomplish a great deal so far in 2020. We have invested significantly in our infrastructure. Our committee activities at the county level has increased significantly with existing and new committees taking on increased workloads to address community's concerns and move projects forward. Finally, the service delivery review process began in February of 2020 after the county of Elgin received funding from the Municipal Modernization Fund to begin a comprehensive review of the services the county of Elgin provides and the manner in which we provide them. The goal of the review is to determine where and how we can provide our services more efficiently and effectively, and how we can partner with Elgin's local municipalities and neighboring communities, provide service that are efficient and seamless for our residents. From this review, consultants have identified 110 unique internal and shared services improvements for the county of Elgin that amounted to almost $2 million in savings over a multi-year timeframe. I will now turn the presentation over to Chief Administrator Officer Julie Gagnon, who discusses each of these initiatives in more detail. Julie?
Thank you, Your Worship, through to members of Central Elgin Council. It's nice to see all of you, and it's a pleasure to be back this year to provide our annual review. If you wouldn't mind just skipping ahead to the strategic plan slide. So in 2019, Elgin County Council embarked on a full strategic planning process. And the purpose of this process was to come up with some strategic goals that will guide their services and financial activities over the next few years. As well, this process will result in a roadmap that will really design and shape how Elgin County looks over the next decade. So public stakeholder and council feedback were incorporated into three main priorities. Serving Elgin, to redesign how we respond to community needs in a creative and sustainable way, growing Elgin, we want to continue to be the place where people want to live, work, and play, and investing in Elgin to make financial decisions that are responsible and to do so with accountability and transparency. So the next slide includes council's strategic plan video. And this was a video developed by council that will capture the highlights of their plan and share those highlights with the community. The next slide talks a bit about partnerships and collaboration. And we certainly celebrate and appreciate the great working relationship we have with our closest neighbors in Central Elgin and our six other local municipal partners, as well as the city of St. Thomas. I'll just capture some highlights here, knowing that the strategic plan video just encapsulated so many of what's included here. We are very pleased to report that the request for proposal for broadband fiber through the synergy network is about to close. And Elgin's original investment of $527,000, once combined with federal and provincial funding, will result in $6.1 million worth of fiber in the ground. So we know that we still have a long way to go in solving Elgin's connectivity challenges, but this is a good start. As well, work is progressing on the Elgin-St. Thomas and Elmer Community Safety and Mobbing Plan. This is, again, just a plan to identify community risks and figure out ways to work together to address those risks through social development, prevention, and risk mitigation. The county has really focused on enhancing our communications, and that's both internal and external. And you may have seen some of these efforts so far, and we recognize we have a ways to go in this area as well. We are also pleased with the ongoing work of the Health Recruitment Partnership that we have with the city of St. Thomas. And this is an initiative aimed at recruiting and retaining general physicians to our rural areas. We provide a number of shared services to our local municipal partners, including legal support on a cost-recovery basis, economic development, accessibility services, property assessment services, and through MTAG to recover lost property assessment. As well, we're very proud of the work of our community and cultural services team, particularly the Elgin Heritage Center and our 10 branch libraries. And we anticipate that there may be other opportunities for Elgin to work with its local municipal partners arising from the service delivery review. And we look forward to engaging in these conversations soon. So the next slide talks about what's new and exciting. So as mentioned a couple times, we are working hard to solve Elgin's connectivity challenges. Elgin has hired a full-time planner, Nancy Passato. She started in April, what a terrible time to start, but she's done some great work already. And we are undertaking a review of the Land Division Committee and working on enhancing customer service coming out of that department. Budget Committee has been mentioned. Ambulance services saw an increase of 12 hours of service in September of 2020, and this will be ongoing. It's directly related to population growth and demands on the service, both in some of our most rural areas and the city of St. Thomas. It seems as though for the past couple of years, we've been talking about collapsed bridges. So this year, I'm happy to report that we're well on our way to building a couple of bridges and rebuilding bridges in Elgin County. So the temporary bridge that's currently in Port Bruce will be relocated to the Meeks Bridge in South Old Township. Port Bruce Bridge will be completed by Christmas, and the rehabilitation of the King George Lip Bridge in Port Stanley will be finished up by the spring. One of the biggest capital projects the county has undertaken in a very long time is the Terrace Lodge redevelopment. This is our, one of Elgin's three long-term care home facilities. We have 100 beds at this facility. We're increasing the footprint but maintaining the 100 beds allocation for that location. And we expect to break ground in the coming weeks. And the fundraising committee hopes to launch a campaign to support some value-added components of that project in and around the same time. So now we'll jump into service delivery review. And I recognize we've already taken up quite a bit of your time, so I'll capture the highlights. And a lot of information is included on, within the slide deck. As well, the full report is posted on the county's website. And you're free to ask any questions at any time of any county councillor, myself, or the warden. So this year, for the first time in its corporate history, Elgin County had the unique opportunity of undertaking municipal service delivery review. And this review was of our organizational structure and the programs and services that we provide. I'd like to thank Don Leach and his team for the number of times that they attended meetings and supported this initiative. And he did so, and his team did so during the peak of the pandemic. So much appreciated, Don. I'd also like to thank any councillors who provided feedback to the consultants as well. So we were able to engage Strategy Corp., an independent consultant, to gather information, provide best practice comparisons, and make recommendations. The consultants were tasked with reviewing and approving the county's human and community services with a focus on long-term care. This is an area that we spend or augment the provincial funding by $5.3 million a year. They were also tasked with examining and approving the county's internal operations and reviewing, improving, and potentially expanding upon municipal shared services agreements with our seven constituent municipalities and the city of St. Thomas. The consultants noted that the county has strong, forward-looking, nimble leadership with the desire to implement strategic change. As well, they noted governance and communication enhancements can improve the county's management of contracts. And while the county celebrates its long-term care homes, now is the right time to address short-term operational challenges and some long-term strategic issues. We also noted that the timing is right to embrace the increased use of our technologies and digital tools, which will resolve any remaining paper processes that we have in place and allow staff to reallocate that time to some more customer-centric activities. Elgin's financial state is comparable to our comparators with similar operating and capital budgets and significantly lower long-term debt. The news that we have a strong financial position. Thanks to the valuable input from all of our local municipal partners, the consultants were able to provide the following recommendations for shared services opportunities. Consideration is being given to shared initiatives such as IT, planning, collaborative purchasing, HR, and engineering advice, as well as the opportunity to rework the governance and administration of existing shared services. And this is to make sure that we have a successful framework in place, and all parties are happy. In terms of county-city opportunities, the consultants suggested that we work with our neighbors at the city to consider developing a joint economic development corporation and consider the opportunity for shared resources with respect to IT services as a medium-to-long-term solution. They noted that St. Thomas Public Library and Elgin County's libraries have a strong history of working closely together. So they suggested that we build upon that and work closely to assess whether there's an opportunity to perhaps even contemplate a joint branch to respond to population growth or some purchasing activities where it might save $15,000 to $45,000 a year if we were to do some joint purchasing. In terms of design principles, the consultants suggested that before we move forward with additional shared services, that we take a step back and we spend some time on design principles for service coordination. It was really clear in the consultant's report that the county and our local municipal partners want to continue to improve our working relationship. And all parties have agreed that policies that balance responsibilities on both sides are needed. The consultants also recommend that the policies governing the road maintenance agreement need to be updated, and the funding arrangement needs an independent review. So detailed recommendations, again, on this initiative are included in the full report. And a bit more information is included in this slide deck for your reference. The next slide indicates that the consultants suggested there could be an opportunity for the county to offer registered professional planning support to interested local municipal partners, which could result in cost savings for those municipalities. Next slide indicates that there may be an opportunity for collaborative purchasing. And they suggest that there could be significant savings that result from joint collaborative purchasing. And they have given council about three options to consider. And again, those are available in tonight's presentation. Human resources is another area that was identified as an opportunity for formalized shared service with interested local municipal partners. And then lastly, they suggest that because the county has had some success providing IT services to BAM and Central Elgin, that we could consider expanding that shared service to other local municipal partners. And further suggested that we could consider offering professional engineer advice from the county to local municipal partners on a cost-recovery basis. So in terms of next steps, council did receive this report in open session on November the 10th. We have submitted this report to the ministry and have posted the full copy, unredacted version, on the website. But we know that the real work comes next. Council has directed that staff prepare a report that prioritizes the 110 recommendations for their review. And it is anticipated that in the coming months, council will commit to some, maybe all, of the priorities listed in the service delivery review. But we also know that this sort of transformation isn't something that happens overnight or very quickly. And it's likely we'll be undertaking some of the recommendations for years to come. So again, we appreciate the positive working relationship that we have council to council and staff to staff. And we look forward to working closely with you and your new CIO in 2021. Lastly, I wish Don all the best in his retirement. He's leaving big shoes to fill. And thank you very much for having us today. We'd be pleased to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dave and Julie. Any questions you have for them? Councilor Wynn?
Um, I was, thank you for this. I was just wondering, with regards to the shared services, what input will we council members, not county council, but these council members and our staff have with this? Since it impacts us as well. So from my perspective, one of my issues with having a shared service, I almost feel like I've lost transparency with it. So if there is an issue with regards to rate pair, I most likely will be the person who would get that call. But I almost feel removed from it because of this. So that would be very important to me, is what input would I get? And of course, what input would our staff have? And with regards to services that we already have, because you had mentioned HR, and yet we have that position filled. So with this, would we be able to cherry pick at any point with these shared services? Or are you anticipating an all-in?
For you, Your Worship. So to address your first question, I think you've provided some really valuable feedback that we'll take back to county council. And certainly, precisely what you have just relayed to us is what's included in the full report.
Okay.
So it was relayed to us consistently through our local municipal partners. And that's why we noted the need for some new parameters and guidelines for those shared services. And that's not something that the county can come up with on their own. And that's not something that will improve the working relationship between upper and lower tiers. So great feedback there.
Okay, thank you.
And then in terms of picking and choosing which initiatives, it would certainly be targeted to municipalities that... Sorry, it's really hot.
You're doing very well.
So it would be municipalities that have an identified need for it. So we recognize that some larger municipalities have, you know, a full suite of resources. You have HR support, you know, engineering support. But some of our local municipal partners who are smaller in scale don't have access to those resources and are paying handsomely for some consultant support in those areas. So it would be for interested municipalities.
Okay.
Support that we'd work closely with to establish and work on those shared services.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Just to add to that, the service delivery review, there was 110 recommendations, and county council has not adopted any of those. So certainly, anything that involves a lower tier, we'd be in consultation with you before we adopt it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Kravitz.
In her presentation, you said that you have hired a full-time planner. Central Elgin, we have an excellent planning department. What benefit? Can you explain the benefit to Central Elgin with a full-time county planner?
The benefit to having a full-time county planner is to support the activities of the land division committee, as well to the upper tier as the planning authority specifically for subdivision review, is required to provide and submit comments on any of those planning applications coming from each of our local municipal partners. So we did run into some challenges with the lack of availability of a part-time planner in the past, which is why council consented to having a full-time planner at the county. So while it may not benefit Central Elgin as as a shared service, it does benefit the county as a whole through the planning application process.
Just to follow up that, with that, so if a smaller municipality within Elgin County requires planning services, do they pay separately for the planner, or how does that work? Because we have an excellent joint service right now with City of St. Thomas with the planning department, and just wondering how that, because we pay for that service currently. I don't want to be paying for something twice, and that's, that would be my concern.
Yeah, so I'd suggest that the county's planning service is not a duplicate of service as is. And what's recommended in the consultant's report is that a similar arrangement with what you have with the city of St. Thomas is something that we could set up with some of our partner municipalities. So if they required support of a registered professional planner, then we could hire additional planners and then charge the cost of those planners to our local municipal partners. So it'd be a relationship from county to interested local municipal partners.
Okay, no, that's fine. I'm just, this is a different question. With the SWIFT network, when you go to the SWIFT site, SWIFT has not done one project within Elgin County. They've done all surrounding counties they've put money into. You mentioned the numbers for the the broadband. What is the, what's the odds of getting money from SWIFT or having SWIFT target something within Elgin County's borders? It hasn't been done in the past. It's rather frustrating when you look at the SWIFT website.
For sure. Very great question. Through you, Your Worship. We recognize that SWIFT was very slow to get started and to build that momentum, and we are excited that the RFP for Elgin County has closed or is about to close, and we will have $6.1 million of fiber in Elgin County commencing in 2021. So we'll finally see fiber in the ground in our community. And the the project itself is starting to gain some traction that we do hope that there is a SWIFT 2.0 that will also receive an equivalent amount of funding from senior levels of government. So I think we will see that come very soon. But we recognize that it will leave a number of unserved areas in Elgin, which is why the connectivity committee is working so hard to come up with a made-in-Elgin solution that will that will work in partnership with the fiber in the ground that SWIFT is installing.
Just in that line too, Dennis, there is a survey that you could take that Tom told you about. Did you do that? Yeah, because that that really helps them understand where, like you and I do not have great service. So I mean, it helps them understand that. Other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Kravitz.
This is something that I read in the local newspaper. What is the recommendations in the report in regard to the the long-term care facilities, the management of them? It's a question that I've had due to the articles in the Elmer Expresso. Is there something that you could share with us at this point, or are we going to leave it in the report?
Oh, no. Again, transparent in the report, but to try to synthesize it, the consultants recommended, based on the feedback that they received, that a board of governors, a board of directors be established, and that board be comprised of health experts. So similar to hospital boards and other kind of health-type special purpose bodies. They're suggesting that that be established and that a CEO, who is responsible for kind of the corporate activities of this huge area of expenditure for the county, be hired to oversee the three homes. And this is because it is such a heavily regulated and legislated service, so high risk, and because we have the three homes that vary in the bed complements. We have a hundred-bed, ninety-bed, fifty-seven-bed. It's hard to achieve economies of scale. And so they're suggesting that direct oversight and governance be provided rather than, you know, council passing policies on visitor restrictions and perhaps things that they aren't comfortable providing guidance and governance on. So that's essentially what I think you are referring to in the newspaper.
Yes, yes, thank you. That's all. I just wanted to say that we're not getting rid of the homes. It's just a governance model we're looking at, because that was one of the concerns people have asked me. Are we getting rid of our old-aged long-term facilities? No, we're not. So thank you.
Well, that was.
Decision hasn't been made yet.
No, 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 it hasn't.
That was one of the recommendations. You were obligated to have one long-term care home. That's provincial policy. They are suggesting that we might want to look at at selling off two other homes. You can imagine this is very politically sensitive. The other thing that could change this equation dramatically is that we're subsidizing the Ontario government by $5.3 billion every year because we have a higher level of care at our homes. The province has since they've done the study, but with COVID, they want to increase the the hours of service for each individual from the standard, the average is two and a half and if they're going to fund that, that would change that that funding relationship that we have with the province significantly. So that instead of the $5.3 million, that could be half a billion dollars, so we don't know. But certainly, if that's the case, that would change that, would change my opinion of what we're going to do with the homes.
And the other concern we have had for a long time at county, Dennis, and I'm sure you people are aware of it too, is that we have no say in who gets priority in the homes. It, they don't have to be an Elgin County resident. Even though Elgin County are paying half the costs of those homes, the taxpayers here are paying half the cost. They don't have any say in who gets priority anymore. So it could be, it can be anyone that's on the list. In fact, I believe Elgin Manor is at least eighty or ninety percent City of St. Thomas. They're not Elgin County residents at all.
I am aware of that, yes.
Yeah. That's the one thing, to me, I think we need to be really lobbying the government to get more say in who goes in the homes if they're going to expect us to pay for them. Any other questions for Julie or Dave? If not, we thank you very much. We appreciate your coming. It's gonna be a long night tonight because we have another presentation and then our meeting. And then we've got tomorrow morning as well, which doesn't look short either, so.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night, El.
Good night.
Okay, both of our people are here for the heritage conservation deck, sorry, district. Sorry. Nick and Dan are both present, so if whoever's going to present, Nick or Dan, I'm not sure, but if you would go ahead and present the Heritage Conservation District draft plan.
Good evening, everybody. I'm just gonna share my screen here and then we'll get started. Can everyone see that okay?
Not yet.
Let me try that again.
There, now we can see it.
Yeah, good.
There we go. Well, good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, counselors, staff, and community members. My name is Nick Bogart, and I'm a planner with MHBC Planning. With me tonight is Dan Curry, who's been working on the project. So the two of us have been the face of the district as we go through the process to update it. So I just wanted to be here tonight to provide a quick update on the Heritage Conservation District project. Talk a bit about background of what we've been working on, talk about some main areas we've been updating, and talk about some of the community consultation and input opportunities coming up. So a bit of background for those who may be new to council or not familiar with the Heritage Conservation District. So it's a defined area that's designated by a municipal bylaw that's passed under what's known as Part Five of the Ontario Heritage Act. And it's intended to conserve the cultural heritage value of an area. And that may include different properties, different features, different resource types, like buildings, landscape, natural features, roads, bridges, things like that, that all have a unique character. It's accompanied by a Heritage Conservation District Plan, which is what we've been working on updating our initial draft over the last little while. And the district plan includes information about the designation of the area, outlines how to manage change as we go forward, and the area has the district in place. And that can cover things like redevelopment or building changes, landscaping, things like that. Not intended to prohibit change or to freeze an area. Sometimes hear about creating a museum. It's not that intense. It's all about maintaining the character and managing change as an area might evolve over time. So a bit of project background for everyone's benefit. This HCD study was previously prepared back in 2012, and then MHBC was retained after that to work on the Heritage Conservation District Plan. We had brought a draft to council in late 2013. It wasn't adopted by council, and then since then, things have continued to evolve within Port Stanley, and we were re-engaged in 2019 to undertake an update and review the district and you know, bring it up to date with current policies and things like that. So we worked with the HCD Steering Committee, which included Mayor Martin, counselors Row and Kravitz, as well as staff members from Planning Development Services and members from Heritage Central Elgin and also community members. So we had a broad group of people, and we had several meetings as the process to update the district plan unfolded. And now I'm happy to say that we have the updated district plan ready for circulation, and it's ready to go to the community for comment. And just wanted to touch briefly on some updates we had from the 2013 version. We've taken a look at the boundary and done some updates on that. I'll talk about that in a minute. We did some updates to reflect current policies and best practices. There's been updated provincial policy statement that's come in place since we did the first draft. Other guidelines, we wanted to incorporate some changes just in approach on conserving character of an area since 2012, 2013. And we've been working on other Heritage District projects, so we just wanted to bring in some of our best practices from that work forward, so we included here. Another item is the Harbor Secondary Plan that's been underway. We wanted to ensure that we conform with the direction that's coming out of that. So the two documents are saying the same thing. We did some work on updating format and layout just to make sure everything is easy to read and easy to understand. And we've also worked on providing clear policies and guidelines to assist people who are using the document. And policies are things that are required to be followed, whereas guidelines are more suggestive, and so we just wanted to differentiate between those. So the district boundary, if everyone can see the colors on the screen, the larger area, I think you can even see my cursor around the outside, that was the study area that came out of the the work that was done in 2012. And what we've done is we update the district plan as we refine that boundary. So you'll see the the red outline and the shading. And we've got the core area of Port Stanley that's included, Colborne Street and Main Street. We've got the the bridge crossing lands along the along the creek that include the railway rail line and station. We've got the visitor center included in there and the building along the water, and then the mud-bassy cottage area. Some areas that we had removed that were in the initial study area was just some of the harbor area where that's covered down by the secondary plan. And just some areas where there's been some change continued to evolve over the years along Edith Cavell Boulevard. So just to give a sense for everyone, the work that we've done and just to refine the study area down. So once we have the the recommended boundary for the district, just wanted to touch on what would a district mean? So it's not really concerned with the use of a property, but more it's about conserving the character of an area, so that can be building type and form and and height and landscaping and things like that. The plan acknowledges there are both heritage and non-heritage properties within the district, so that's newer properties, older properties, and they all combine to make up the Heritage District. We've got some policies in there for heritage permit, and it's required for major changes to properties. And there are some minor changes that are exempt from needing any approval at all. And that's things like landscaping, or if you're working on a new roof or some small repairs and maintenance, things like painting and fencing and some utility work as well. And I just wanted to touch briefly on the heritage, non-heritage properties. Not sure how it looks on everyone's screen here, but mine, we've got yellow properties as as heritage properties, and the blue is is non-heritage property. So those are either vacant lands or properties that have have newer buildings on them. So it just gives gives a sense for everyone of the mix within the district. And on to next steps. So we'll have the release of the district plan to the community for review information, and that's available today with the council agenda package. And it's going to be up on the website as well. And community engagement is planned through Let's Talk Central Elgin, and then there'll be a formal public meeting that's scheduled. And then the final district plan, we're planning to bring it forward for council approval in early 2021. The timing of that would depend a bit on when we have the public meeting and how things come out from there. So that was about all for me. Happy to answer any questions that council might have, and Dan's here as well, so between the two of us, I'd like to answer any questions you might have. So I think I'll stop sharing my screen, and then we can go back to anything if we want to, then you can see me better.
Thank you, Nick. Questions for Nick or Dan? Colleen and Dennis and I are very familiar with it, having sat on this committee. Counselor Fair, go ahead.
I was just curious. I see you've got your boundaries all in there, but I noticed the berm doesn't have anything. Are there, are there any sort of overflow, if you will, or or rules that would apply from from the heritage plan that would take, consider, be considered in the secondary plan? Like, I know one time there were building heights were mentioned so that they would be not blocking the view of the harbor and that. But I'm just wondering, is there something that would be anticipated to make sure that the whatever new development or public facilities go in there that they would match sort of the heritage site commitments around there?
Don, do you want to answer that?
Madam Mayor, the the committee did have a discussion about that as well. The consultants from MHBC did meet with Ron Chishido from Dylan, who's the lead on the Harbor Secondary Plan. And normally, the Heritage Conservation District Plan will deal with the built environment and built areas. This is completely vacant lands. So the document that will guide the development of the berm area will be the Harbor Secondary Plan, both sides of the harbor, the berm area and on the west side where it's vacant. And you'll also see that there are other areas around the beach that were taken out of the the plan, either because there's development already approved for those, but they're essentially vacant lands. Whereas the Heritage Conservation District Plan focuses on existing current built built areas so that there's, you know, no conflicts between the two.
And also, we as a council will be approving the Harbor Secondary Plan. So I mean, we will have full say in, you know, height restrictions and all that, that, you know, that's, that could all be part of it. But that, you know, that's our. But that, you know, that's our, I mean, we can certainly take examples from the Heritage Conservation District. But as Don said, you know, there's no, we don't, we're not duplicating, we're doing two different plans, but they certainly should work in conjunction with each other. Deputy Mayor Marks.
If memory serves me correct, five or six years ago, this, first, I'm in favor of this plan, but this is a repeat. We tried this through, I wasn't on council then, but a previous council tried this. And then there was quite a bit of pushback from some residents and ultimately I assume was abandoned. Looking for this, do we expect any of that? Or what are we going to do different? So we can get this completed? Again, I'd like to say that I am in favor. We just don't want us to end up in the same spot we did several years ago.
Just a couple of things that I can respond to that, Tom, is the, the district plan that was developed, we took and put them as guidelines in our official plan. Not as policies, but as guidelines. So we didn't just totally abandon it. We just put in as guidelines, which means they don't have to follow it. We just asked them to try. Even in this plan here, we have some policies on certain, certain areas, but say the Mod Bessie down that way, we're just doing guidelines again. So that it varies from location to location. So we did listen to people. One of the concerns they had been was, you know, you have to use heritage materials to repair. We're saying now it just has to look like heritage, doesn't have to be the exact same material. So this plan is, has changed. Now let Nick and Dan explain if they wish other ways that it has changed from the original one.
I think, Madam Mayor, one of the, the other main changes has really been addressed in the previous question. With the area being somewhat smaller than, than the previous Heritage Conservation District. So it was a very ambitious heritage district with a number of, of areas. The secondary plan running at the same time really addresses the area in the harbor and, and the Heritage Conservation District really focuses on the, as Nick described, on the downtown and the Mod Bessie neighborhood. So in that regard, the plan is, is, I would say somewhat simpler. And then as, as you described, Madam Mayor, the plan has been modified to address some of the main comments or issues that, that some members of the community had the first time around.
And it was resurrected because the community asked to have it brought back again. It wasn't initiated by council. It was Port Stanley that asked us. They saw after, I think after the one development was approved by the LPAT, that they felt if, if there'd been a conservation district in previously, that would not, the style would not have been approved. So I, I know that the community itself would like to keep the look and feel of the downtown part of Port Stanley. Certainly doesn't affect the, the development that's going on all around it. Any other questions? Counselor Winn.
So just, I'm sure. With regards to the map that showed the yellow and blue, so yellow is what would be considered heritage, the blue is new and wouldn't fall under the, the guidelines then is, is that how I understand it? So if, if you have a yellow property, if we were to go ahead with this, that policy would apply to you. But if you owned one of the blue properties, it wouldn't apply.
It's different, different guidelines, yes.
It would be guidelines.
And, and even then, as I say, some of the areas have policies, some just have guidelines, even of the heritage ones. Because we felt Mod and Bessie have really improved over, since we did the original one, and we don't want to stop that improvement.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there anything Nick or Dan, you want to add to that? If you heard Fiona's question?
I, I think I just clarify that all, all the properties within the, the district boundary are, are within the district. So they're all covered by some portion of the plan. And yes, that's right. There are certain areas that are have different policies or guidelines, depending if the property is heritage property or non-heritage property. Every property is within the district though. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we do have a motion. I'm sorry, Mr. Leach, he was to speak.
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's just irrelevant to the motion. The, the next step, if council is comfortable, would be to move forward with what we're suggesting would be like a virtual open house and the statutory public meeting. There is a requirement to give notice to have that meeting. Given the timing, councils neither look to have it, which would be just in the week or so before Christmas or would be into January. So if we were looking at the week or so before Christmas, looking at possible dates of Wednesday, the 16th, Thursday, the 17th, or Monday, the 21st, or as I said, if the next opportunity would be here.
Okay. And, and as Mr. Leach said, we're going to combine the public meeting and the statutory public meeting. So there won't be like an open house as a separate meeting, because when they're virtual, they're going to be exactly the same thing. So we're just going to combine and do it as one. Where we'll give everyone a chance. It'll be a Zoom webinar if we can get it working properly like we didn't have tonight. But that people can then ask the questions and get the answers, et cetera. And we will do a presentation at that time. Because the statutory public meeting is required. And yes, Mr. Leach.
And as noted during the presentation, we'll try to use Let's Talk Central Elgin and try to engage the public with information through Let's Talk Central Elgin. Sort of in, in lieu of having that, that open house, so that there's opportunities for people to ask questions through that site and get answers back. And maybe sharing up different boards and information as if there was an open house.
So what are your thoughts on dates? We had hoped to get this done before Mr. Leach left. That was, that was part of it because he's been very involved in it all along. It was one thing he wanted to finish. Obviously the final bylaw, no matter what, wouldn't be passed till January, but your thoughts on public meeting, Mr. Leach suggested three dates or waiting till January. So I'm just wondering what your thoughts are, Mr. Fair.
For the three dates, the three dates.
Three dates were Wednesday, this, sorry, right, Wednesday, December 16th, Thursday, December 17th, or Monday, December 21st. Counselor Row.
I would suggest December 16th, if it happens at all in December. Just I think the 21st may be just a little bit too close to Christmas or to the holidays.
16th, that's, it's certainly, I don't have anything on my calendar on the 16th, other than our emergency control group. Counselor Fair.
I was, I was leaning more towards into January to give, give it more thought. So it wouldn't be. We don't want it to be something that's, that's pushed and pushed through quickly because of Christmas. I, I don't, I lean to more, towards more taking a little bit of time and, and taking out of the season where people have other things to do and may not give it the proper thought and process that it should, that it deserves.
It will be posted on the Let's Talk Central Elgin as of, oh, is that likely, Mr. Leach?
I would say the next couple of days.
Next couple of days, which will give them at least three weeks. Because it's, it's over three weeks to the 16th. Counselor Winn.
I tend to agree with Counselor Fair. I, I, I just feel with people's minds aren't going to be on this. And, and this is something that I really think we need public feedback from. So that would be my only concern is that with it being that week before Christmas, we may be missing a great group of people who just aren't into dealing with this at that time. So that January, January may have more open to getting involved in something like this. So I, I would tend to go for January myself.
There certainly won't be the, the migration south that there normally is from Port Stanley. So.
I know. And I do understand that, that this year is different. I think people still get themselves caught up in something for the season. So I would just be afraid we'd be missing out on people.
No, I just meant that the January, sometimes we have a whole migration normally out, but you won't having that.
Have that. No, that's right.
Rest. Deputy Mayor Marks.
I, I certainly, I tend to agree that January I prefer. Certainly I, I we're going to miss Mr. Leach no matter when he goes. He, but I think we're, I think we're approaching this in the right manner. Like I said, I'm in favor of it, but we did have a bad experience. We don't want to do it again. I think we have a lot of people now with live streaming. There's tremendous more people watching us. The word will get out and it's a chance to educate, get people ready to it and not, not be afraid of it. And we'll still end up with the same result, but with COVID going sideways like it is, Christmas, people are stressed out right now. I think get Christmas behind us. People be looking for something to do early January. I, I'd like to see a good positive result and I, I think waiting would be prudent.
What dates, Mr. Leach, would you suggest? Yes?
What I might suggest for January is that if that's council's desire to go to January, that we can contact Nick and Dan afterwards, check their schedule and, you know, check with council's availability in January. And once a date set, then give the required statutory notice for the public or a date in January.
Because we, you know, we still have another council meeting in December, but that's not till the 14th, right? So what's the statutory three weeks?
It's 20 days.
20 days. Well, there still would be lots of time.
Yes.
That the consensus, Colleen?
Yeah, I'm totally fine with that. I guess I didn't want to kind of have it the 21st because it was supposed to Christmas. So I'd be totally comfortable. I don't know. I was just looking at my calendar. Hopefully Nick and Dan can come up with some good dates, but you know, January 7th, 14th. I would think no later sort of than the second week in January though. Don't want to leave it too long, but we'll see their availability.
Yes, because we come back to work as far as the municipality on January 4th. So it'd be. I don't know. Vince, I don't know about Nick and Dan, whether they have Christmas. Do you have two weeks at Christmas?
Yeah, we'll be through you, Madam Mayor. We'll be back to work the same day as you. I think we can generally coordinate most dates to work, but we will check our schedules just to make sure we don't have a, a conflict. And we'll coordinate through Mr. Leach. But I would, I would agree probably the second week in January would be best. That's generally people are back, not that people are going very far in terms of vacation, but at least they're back sort of in their mindset to, to think about these types of things. So, but we'll work with Mr. Leach for, for a date that works for him.
Thank you. You want, do you have a motion?
Madam Mayor, the date hasn't been included in the motion. So. I, Deputy Mark, second by Counselor Row, where is MHBC planning presented the Port Stanley Heritage Conservation District Plan to council in November, the 23rd, 2020, now therefore be resolved that council directs staff to give notice of a public meeting to be scheduled through Zoom webinar, whereby council can receive public feedback on the proposal and that said notice for the public meeting respecting the Heritage Conservation District in Port Stanley be given through social media posts, municipal website and direct mailing to the affected properties.
Should we mention Let's Talk Central Elgin in the motion or not? Or does it not need to be?
I think what we're looking for is just listing those that are the required.
Required ones. Okay.
Council setting out, but certainly Let's Talk Central Elgin. The meeting.
Thank you. With the motion, I'm going to ask Diane to call the vote then.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Crevets?
Yes.
For Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
As Lucian carries.
Thank you. And thank you, Dan and Nick. And have a very merry Christmas then. We may not, won't be talking to you until the new year.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good night, council.
Okay, correspondence requiring action. We have the first one from the Port Stanley Fire Rescue. Would you read the motion first and then if there's a discussion?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. The motion reads, my counsel row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that council has no objections to a request by the Port Stanley Fire Rescue Employees Association to use Selborn Park for an outdoor skating rink in the community, subject to the association working in cooperation with Jeff Brooks, Director of Infrastructure and Community Services regarding materials and final approval and liability issued provided by the organizers in the municipality of Central Elgin as co-insured and held harm.
Before I call a vote, okay, I was going to say one, my concern would be the insurance. I would like, because we aren't having the parades, we're not offering that money to help with insurance. I don't know, because it'll be running all winter. But I would like to, for us, I, I would recommend that we ask staff to have a look and see what it would cost to include it on our insurance, like our A special rider or whatever, like we do for the, for the parades. To assist, because the firefighters, I don't know what the insurance rate would be, but I know it's about 350 for a parade. So for one evening. So I don't know what it would be, but that was just my thought, because we certainly aren't offering anything other than that this year. Deputy Mayor Marks?
Just a thought. I, I think it's a great idea. Couple of years ago, the, the health unit were very involved and they had these column kits where they had, I think Anglican Church had one down there. And of course, we, we never had winter and it pretty much sat there, but I'm sure that those were to be reused. So and I think they probably put a fair bit of effort into researching things like insurance, et cetera. So they may be a good resource for the firefighters to check. But you know, outdoor skating, you can't get any better than that. So.
Actually, yeah, we do have, we do have kits and they're at the works yard. Mr. Brooks said that he would certainly make all that available to them. Counselor Winn?
Um, well, I was just going to say that it's a fantastic idea and kudos to them for, for coming up with that. I think that would be great and a perfect spot for it as well. So I certainly have no concerns about it. I think that's a great idea for the insurance. The only thing I wasn't sure with the parades that are happening this year, so not the normal parades. But I know there's like a convoy will be going through Belmont. Just if we're like, I just don't want to be stepping on toes that we're doing insurance, we're offering insurance for the skate park or sorry, not skate park. Skate rink and, and that they're not needing insurance for what they're doing and we're not offering then. So, but, but otherwise it's a great idea.
Still each, do we still require, do they still require insurance to take this Santa and the firefighters around?
I don't know what.
Shut the road down.
It, it may be, we, I don't know if we've looked into that, but if not, we'll look into that with our insurer and see what their advice is.
Right. Yeah. Cause we're not shutting roads down like we normally do. Mr. McDonough, are you wishing to speak?
Yeah, just to clarify, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the insured issue with the Belmont function is, has been cleared. I've already talked to that and I've also got an inquiry in about the, the skating rink with the association. So I should have an answer for that within the next couple of days.
Thank you. Any, any other questions?
Oh, I just, I'm quite sure that our insurance would be covered in that park. It's already, we're already insuring it as a ball diamond. The rest of the year in the skate park, but I think we should look into it and I would support helping cover the cost of insurance through the municipality if need be.
The reason is that these, the firefighters are not Central Elgin employees per se. And that's why insurance is required. I know it's on municipal land. I mean, they do it at the Sparta Baldieman. And I don't know that they've had insurance for that one, Mr. Leach. I know that that's one of the health unit kits and they, Linda Karen's does that each year. I don't know. And that was with approval from Central Elgin that she does it.
Just something to, just to check with our insurer.
Just something to, just to check with our insurer.
Right.
Make sure there is no issues to make sure that the firefighters do have coverage personally for themselves as well as municipality should something.
Right. So everyone heard the motion, I assume, and we're saying we support it and we'll look into the insurance. What would you call the vote?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Crevets?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
And the second one for action is from Kettle Creek Conservation Authority. And I, I will just tell you right now, Catfish are planning to send you exactly the same letter. Only their meeting is this Thursday, so that's why you don't have it. But if you would read the motion.
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Motion reads, moved by Council Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that correspondence received from Kettle Creek Conservation Authority respecting Bill 229, their concerns about the proposed changes as outlined in Conservation Ontario's Summary of Proposed Amendments to Conservation Authorities Act dated November the 11th, 2020, and more specifically requesting the removal of Schedule Six from Bill 229 be endorsed.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
This was brought up this week at the Kettle Creek Board Meeting, and we didn't want to give the standard response to the province and just say, no, we don't want it. So instead, we, the chart that's included in this report, that's something that we want them to come provide answers for rather than us just being negative and saying no. So that's the approach we, we took, and it's a time, time sensitive issue. And I think we should just add cat, kettle at, or catfish at this time as well. I would agree with that.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking that we could say we're endorsing it and we would endorse, because Catfish is virtually going to be the same. The only thing, the other thing that they were concerned about is that it says that the chair has to rotate every two years and the vice chair. And that's fine for kettle, because they have a fair sized board. That doesn't work at Catfish all the time, just because there are only five on there. And I, since I've been on there, there have been years where I was the only experienced board member. The other four were all brand new, and so it would be very difficult to force that. That's the only other concern that Catfish has, and I think there are other small boards out there too, that if it's forced, and they're also saying it has to be a council member that it's appointed, and that's what we're doing anyway. So that's not a thing. And if you don't have a farmer on the Conservation Authority, the province has the right to appoint a farmer to it. But I, I would assume both Conservation Authorities, I know Catfish certainly has, they have two farmers on it. Out of five, so that's, but anyway, I, I, it is an important one. And those of you who are in on the call with Karen Vecchio and Jeff Urick, I did ask about this because I was quite concerned that if the Conservation Authority says, no, this is not appropriate. It's, you're building in a marsh or a swamp or a wetland. The person can actually say, well, that's fine, and they can go straight to the minister and get approval there. But then the Conservation Authority is required to supervise something they said no to, which is going to be rather difficult. So that's why I asked Mr. Urick and about that. And he says, oh, no, it's going to all be science based, but we'll have to see. It, this won't affect us likely around here. It's in the Toronto, Halton, that area where there's big developers that don't like the fact that they can't develop just anywhere they want to. Deputy Mayor Marks?
I certainly have no problem supporting this, actually support it very strongly. But I, just on technicality, the suggestion by Councilor Crevets to include Catfish, it's pretty hard for us to endorse them without something official. So I hesitate there. We're, we're actually, until we actually get it, how can we, we're only assuming.
Yeah, and the problem is the deadline is Monday, and they're not meeting till Thursday. And we don't meet again until the 14th of December. That's fine. I mean, we can't, it's true. We have not received it from them. That's only myself talking to.
Technicality, but.
No, we can, we can do that, and they can send their letter just direct. We could say we endorse Kettles and any other Conservation Authority that feels the same way. I'm just joking. We can endorse Kettles as, as the motion said. Would you call the vote then?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Crevets? For Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Okay, we have six items for information. Does anyone have anything there they'd like to bring out? Council Row and then Council Crevets?
Yes, I would look at endorsing number one, the Ontario Heritage Act, the Bill 108 questions, as well as possibly number four regarding the licensing of the cannabis stores. It doesn't really impact us around here, but having a cannabis store in every block really doesn't seem to make any sense to me.
We have two in St. Thomas now that I'm aware of, maybe more. I was strongly supporting number one as well, because it's the same as the Conservation Authorities. They can overrule the heritage, municipal heritage committees as well and council. Anyone else? Are those, Council Crevets, you had said you wanted to speak where the?
Mine was in regards to number two.
Number two.
Just wanted to make a comment on that. I, I see they're asking for an official plan designation change on agricultural land. And even as I was presented in the Ogan County Report, it was recommended that the protector agricultural land. And I had a few people in the Stone Church area that raised concern that a subdivision being built in behind their house, their current house on agricultural land, they have an issue with at this point. They can't stop progress, they say, but it, it is an issue.
Yes, and, and it's not in the official plan at this time. That is zoned agriculture in the official plan at this time. So it's just going to be looked at, I believe, Mr. Leach, through the amendment, the review?
Yes, Madam Mayor, would be looked at through the official plan review that's basically just started to be underway again. This would involve, this is being presented for information purposes only at this time. It would involve an adjustment at the minimum of the settlement area boundary, if not an expansion of the settlement area. So again, that would all have to be justified and supported by this council and potentially county council. So this is just very preliminary at this point where they're indicating an interest in, in re-designating this property, but this is for information only.
Yeah, just as a note to that, because currently in the official plan, there is a designated area for development in the Union area already. But to add a second one, if it's not required to lose agricultural land, I'd be opposing this at this point.
And all the designated areas in Union are on the other side of the road back, you know, on the west side of Sunset Road. In the official plan right now.
I just, I just wanted to bring that up at this point, that's all.
So that's, you're not, you don't want that removed at the moment? It's just for information?
Yes, yes, as information.
So number one, Colleen would like to have removed, and number four. Are there, is there someone who would be willing to support or second those? Okay, both Bill and are happy to second, second. Like to read the motion about the rest?
The main motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Row, that correspondence items number one through number six, excluding items number one and number four, be received as information filed.
Call the vote?
We've.
All right, Council Crevets?
Voting on one and four separately, though?
Yes, voting on one and four separately.
Just because at one point I did oppose having stores within Central Ogan altogether, so I'll probably be voting no for number four.
Go ahead with this one. Call the vote for, this is the, the others that we're receiving for information at the moment.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Crevets?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Okay, now.
Okay.
Motion towards number one, endorsing number one.
Motion reads, moved by Council Row, seconded by Council Fair, that correspondence received from the town of Grinsby respecting proposed regulation under the Ontario Heritage Act, Bill 108 be endorsed.
Call the vote?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Crevets?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
And then one for number four.
Moved by Council Row, seconded by Council Win, that correspondence received from the city of Hamilton with requests for an amendment to the AGCO licensing and application process for cannabis retail stores be endorsed.
You call the vote this?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Crevets?
No.
Council Fair?
Yes. Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Hey, Central Ogan Planning Office, the first one, the blows on the family business.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Row, that report CP 4620 be received as information and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw to satisfy conditions of a residence surplus to a farming operation severance on lands located at four, sorry, 6738 Quaker Road, which may be legally described as concession for part of lots 22 and 23 geographic township of Yarmouth, now municipality of Central Ogan. And further, that a date for a public meeting be scheduled for Monday, December the 14th, 2020 at 7:00 PM in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54506 as amended.
I'm just curious that it's lots. Would you say 22 and 23? Because I live on the west side of Quaker Road and I'm in lot 23. So anyway, that's fine. No, I'm in lot 21. You're right.
You can say that's what the reports.
Yes, it does. And I'm sure that's correct. I'm sorry. Yeah, just, just for your information, as a council, that is the cobblestone house, which is a very historically significant house in Sparta. So I'm hoping that with them severing it, that someone will buy it and repair it or restore it. Or, you know, it's been rented for quite a few years now, and it would be nice to see it in private ownership and be fixed up would be my, my feeling, because it is a quite an interesting, it's, it's by cobblestone, I mean, they, they actually took a board, a piece of wood that had two knotholes, a bigger one and a smaller one. And the stone would go through the big one, but not through the little one. That's the size of stone they had to use to build this. And it's all in a herringbone pattern. The stones go like this and then back like this as brick coins. It was built in 1872, and the man who built it was over 80 years of age when he built it. He came, he walked here from the States. He was a Quaker. It was built by a Quaker. And he came up to build it for his nephew, Isaac Chase, and he had worked on the Erie Canal where there's a lot of this cobblestone building. And the town of Paris in Ontario has several cobblestone buildings. This is the only one in this whole area, and so I would really like to see it preserved. So hopefully, this will help with that. Would you like to call the vote?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Crevets?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Would you like to read the next resolution on the, it a van?
The next motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report CP 4720 be received as information and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw to reflect the list of agricultural, agricultural related and on farm, on farm diversified uses permitted on the lands located at 45811 Fruit Ridge Line, which may be legally described as concession for north part lot of 19 geographic township of Yarmouth, now municipality of Central Ogan. And further, that a date for a meeting be scheduled for Monday, December the 14th, 2020 at 7:15 PM in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54506 as amended.
Are any questions about this? If not, would you call the vote?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Crevets?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Then the next motion from the CAO 2420 on off-road vehicles.
The next motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Row, that council direct staff to prepare a bylaw to prohibit the use of off-road vehicles on Central Ogan municipal roads and streets. They forth parts of municipal roads and streets where off-road vehicles are permitted under specific circumstances as per report CAO 2420.
If any questions? Counsel, or Deputy Mayor Marks, then Council Crevets?
I, I know there's quite a bit of talk about this at the county level. What, what's the present rules in Central Ogan?
It's prohibited unless we gave them permission.
I, I guess. I really, it's not a big issue with me other than the fact, where does enforcement fall? Because I've kind of, we've through so many things lately with Andy Mask and hate passing anything unless we can enforce it, because it just ends up we've been getting egg on our face. If we pass a bylaw about having a dog on a beach, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and then we can't follow through and enforce it. People are reminding us, and I sort of wonder, is this going to be the same thing with this or not?
Please. Enforcement falls to the OPP because it's the Highway Traffic Act, so they'll be the primary.
And they have been enforcing this one, and they said they have had no problem whatsoever with this Talbot Trail Group. That we gave permission on three small sections, our roads. The county have already agreed not to allow it on county roads. And I believe the township of Malahide has the same motion that we do, that they have specific people that they've given permission to or, or trail groups, but only on very small sections of road. Now, Council Crevets, sorry.
Is there a double standard with this, with our fire off-road vehicle that we allow to run on the road or the parks off-road vehicle that we allow to run on the road? How does that, if we're going to ban them, are we still allowing Central Ogan's vehicles to run on the roads? How is that dealt with?
There, there are certain exceptions for vehicles that are licensed. I believe our off-road vehicles are, are licensed to be on, on the road. That there was a change in regulation several years ago that we dealt with at that point and those requirements for certain safety equipment too to be warranted. So in those particular cases, it's my understanding that they are permitted under the current rules.
Okay, and also with that, is there an exemption for farmers with slow-moving vehicle sign on? Because I know there's a few local farmers that do use the Kubota-style units to tow certain vehicles. It like, what's going to happen with those? Are they going to be exempt somehow?
Please. It's my understanding that vehicles used for agricultural purposes, whether they be tractors or other equipment, would continue to be permitted as long as they're being used for agricultural purposes.
It's really is off-road recreational vehicles is basically. This one's about, but it is the same bylaw we've had in place. We're just renewing it. Any other questions? If not, would you call the vote?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Crevets?
No at this time.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
No at this time.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Hey, Beach Mural, would you read the motion?
Motion reads, by Council Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that council approved the placement of a mural on the main beach washroom change room building with the cost to be funded by Dorothy, by the Dorothy Palmer Estate, and that said approval is subject to council's approval of the mural's final design. And further, that the chief administrative officer be authorized to finalize the agreement and the artist Stephanie Utari as per report CAO 2520.
This is money that the Palmer Estate had given us a while ago or tried, were trying to, and so now Andrew Gunn is trying to come up with a way to, because the project that they had originally given it to us for fell through, so. Council Row?
Thank you. I appreciate the Dorothy Palmer Estate even thinking about us, I guess, for starters. My only concern would be if you paint on the beachside with the sand and the wind and whatnot, it would sort of wear a little bit faster than maybe if it was in a different location. So just looking for an opinion of whether both sides of the building are a good idea or what a maintenance plan might look like for something like this. Because I've seen some murals in different places where they, you know, as they fade, I guess, they, they kind of look a little bit dilapidated or something. I don't know what the right word is. But it would just have to be kind of well-maintained, I think, to really make a, a long-term impact.
Do I, I agree. I think the sand is going to be a bit of an issue on the south side because we get a lot of wind and sand blowing there, especially in the winter, but. Mr. Leach?
We certainly can raise the, the, the south side and concerns about the sand blowing with the artists and Mr. Gunn. Mr. Gunn indicated to me that the typical lifespan for a mural is estimated twenty years is what they're estimating. And the ones they've done in St. Thomas recently through this estate or similar estate funds, they're looking for twenty years. The agreements typically have a warranty period for the artist to come back and do any kind of touch-up if there's any kind of failure of paint in the first time period. But his indication was that you shouldn't necessarily expect to have the mural there in a presentable form beyond twenty years.
Certainly, the mural on the Jackson Fisheries Building, that was redone by the artist. That was originally put on by Heritage Port. And then they had the artist back about four years ago to completely redo it because it had faded badly.
Okay.
Any other questions? Not, would you call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. And now, CAO, council remuneration. Want to state anything, Mr. Leach, before we, or do you want to just read the motion?
Staff's looking for direction.
You were looking for direction, okay. Mr. Leach, do you want to say anything before we discuss it or?
Essentially, staff are seeking, you know, consideration through a resolution, authorizing staff to deduct an amount equal to any overcompensation determined through this review with the next remuneration pay, which would be the December remuneration. So it'd be done before the end of the year. So looking for direction from council. authorize that should it be council's desire.
Counselor Winn?
Um, I, I don't see why, like, once amounts are determined that it's not taken directly off of our, our next pay.
So you're endorsing the fact that?
I would have no problem with that whatsoever.
Other comments, Counselor Row?
No, I was just gonna say I would agree.
Anyone else have any comments? I know no one, as Mr. Leach said, nobody put it in on purpose. Like, nobody was trying to bilk the municipality, plus some staff who just didn't catch it. And, and that was my reason for wanting to go to a flat salary was it's a very time-consuming thing. And this has taken Mr. Leach months to go through all the minutes of all the meetings and all the submitted forms that each of us submitted to come up with this. And we can all make mistakes. So, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to certainly, if, you know, if there's anything that, that each of us repay, anything that we got that we weren't entitled to. Deputy Mayor Marks?
Who's, who's making the decision that it is overpayment or not?
It was Mr. Leach who determined that. He looked at, he'd looked at all the minutes and all the sheets that people had submitted. And he looked at the regulations that geared what we are allowed to charge for and what we're not. I can let Mr. Leach speak for himself, but he was the one who made the determination.
But it's, I, I think we're, I'm not so sure I'm in favor of it. We've, it's been signed off by a director and apparently by Mr. Leach as well. We're gonna get into a whole lot more, you know, calculations and more time spent. You know, I, I'd be happy to let anyone from the public view my extra meetings. I have nothing to hide. But I, I just don't see the necessity of this. I think we've spent a lot of time on this already.
Well, we have, and that's the whole point. This is, all the research, all the work has been done. We just have to decide, should it be deducted off the next pay or not? That's basically what we're deciding tonight. Counselor Fair and then Counselor Winn?
I'm, I, I'm prepared for a less, less aggressive approach and I, I, I think I can reconcile myself with the, the calculations that were, were determined to be somewhat an error. And I, I, I would be fine with that, but I, but I do say it should be repaid. I don't think we should ever accept any funds that are questionable or that we're not entitled to. So I, I endorse taking it off, off the pays.
Counselor Winn?
Um, I was just gonna say that again.
Any other comments? Need a mover and you've got the motion?
It's as per the recommendation, yes.
Okay, Counselor Winn is moving that. Counselor Fair is seconding or Counselor Krebitz, whichever. Would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Winn, seconded by Counselor Fair, that council direct staff to deduct an amount equal to any net overcompensation determined through the twenty-nineteenth council remuneration review from the next council remuneration pay as per report CAO twenty-six twenty.
Would you call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yep.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
They had nothing to hide, yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're now at Director of Infrastructure and Community Services. Yes, Deputy Mayor Marks.
If I may, before we leave this, was this, when we went to the flat rate, was that not for a one-year trial period?
No.
Okay.
That's not my understanding. And was it, Mr. Leach? We said that was going to be what we're going to do unless council
Well.
do. I don't know.
I missed that meeting because of my mother passing, so I, I wasn't part of it. But part that bothers me is I'd like more information available to the public attendance. We attend a lot of meetings and, and the public really doesn't know if, if they have a representative there or not. And I think that should be available.
Okay, I, I think part of the reason we went to the flat one was because it is very time-consuming. If someone on staff genuinely is going to check each thing we submit and that, that, you know, it would be very time-consuming to do it accurately. We learned that there were inaccuracies just because it was missed by people. They didn't take the time. They assumed we knew what we were doing. And I think things weren't that clear in the policy that some people made mistakes, just not purposefully, but just accidentally made mistakes. So that was why we decided to do the other. Now, we can certainly, at the time of a year, Mr. Leach, should we be reconsidering it to make sure that we endorse it for the future or not? And, and Mr., sorry, Deputy Mayor Marks would like some way of showing attendance. Can we publish that at the end of each year to say how many meetings or what would you like there, Ms. Deputy Mayor Marks?
I, you know, I attend cemetery board meetings and say there's ten a year and I attend ten. But what would the public think if I attended two? And, and that's what the public does not, they need that information because of, I'm not picking on anyone because I think we all work very hard and very good, but the public, public doesn't know that. I, I attend some meetings where other municipalities are there and quite often their member is not there. And, you know, it's pretty easy to see council meetings, especially now when they're live-streamed. But like I say, I believe there needs to be that accountability and, and we do not have it now.
Mr. Leach, what are your thoughts on that?
I guess there are a couple of questions to understand. The first one, certainly, council can have that discussion about remuneration going forward for two thousand and twenty-one if it wishes to continue on with, you know, happening this year in two thousand and twenty or go back to a previous system or some other variations. So certain council can certainly have that discussion if it's, if council's wish. In terms of coming up with an attendance list, I think to a certain degree that would be possible. You know, the more outside boards involved and the more work there would be involved in doing it, but I think we could do it. We were going to do it. I would suggest it's easier to do going forward, like saying start in two thousand and twenty-one. Yeah. Rather than trying to go back and replicate, do everything started this year. But if that was council's desire, then I think what staff could do is, is come up with a possible model for the report and make sure that that reflects council's desire in terms of the committee and attendance. I think the ones that would be most problematic or would require the most work would be those outside agencies where we don't automatically receive minutes or things like that, that we'd have to contact the agency and just confirm attendance.
Yeah, and, and certainly, knowing how many hours Mr. Leach spent on this one, I would not want him to have to go back through all those reports and figure it out for this year. So I agree with starting in two thousand and twenty-one if that's what we want to do. Counselor Winn?
I'm just wondering though, are we not just setting ourselves up for the same as when we were having to put in for our committee meetings? So, and, and I'm not saying against staff and that they can't. But like, we had issues with that, with putting in for our committee meetings. And, and so we're gonna be going through the same thing to determine if our time or hours spent at these committee meetings were the same thing. I, I, I get, I completely understand what you're saying. But, but I can, like, in, in my second term, I can say that's not, like, I've had people come at me for many things. But one of them is not being my time spent doing my job, which is not a full-time job. It's, I'm spent dealing with issues as they come up. So I personally, I don't see, I, I don't understand the need for that. If any rate pair has any problem with what you think I'm doing, come to me. And I'm really happy to go over that with you. And I would much rather you be coming and speaking to me about that first anyways. But, yeah, I, I just think we're putting more work on staff that they already have enough. And, and then we're having to ensure in the end, are those numbers right? At least there's not a dollar value attached to it this time, but still, I, I just feel if somebody has a question about that, they should just come and speak to us.
Well, one other concern just before I, I will, as the other two want to speak, just meetings vary very much in length as well. So you might have a meeting once a month, a certain one that lasts fifteen minutes to half an hour. You may also have ones that last three and four hours and have them, I know certainly our CAO interview committee, we had long, long hours for many, many days. And I will say, I'm glad that that's done and we're finished and we're, you know, we're tidying, tidling things up tomorrow is our last meeting. So I, I would find it difficult with that. Now, Counselor Fair, you wanted to speak and then Deputy Mayor Marks wanted to speak again.
I just wanted to say that when we, when we signed on for this, we realized there would be a lot of meetings. And I, I felt that you as, as the mayor assigned various committees on a, I felt a very relatively balanced way and, and we do our duties, we know our duties. And I agree with Counselor, Counselor Winn that should we shrug off our duties or, or not meet the standards that we should, then I would, I would definitely welcome anybody to talk to us. But I, I think our duties are defined and I think we, we all signed up for a lot of meetings and a lot of work. And with, you know, we all, we all have our, our own integrity and, and we meet the standards. So I, I don't think that we need to have someone else looking over our shoulder saying, oh, are they doing it? Are they not doing it? I think, I think we all realize our responsibilities and, and live up to them.
Deputy Mayor Marks, you wanted to speak again. And then Counselor Krebitz?
Just going to point out the, you know, back to the first Central Ogden council after amalgamation. And it ended up that they went to the extra paid, extra meeting because three or four of the counselors are doing most of the work. And that's, you know, when they went to that, you go attend a meeting, you're paid. And, you know, that worked pretty well for eighteen, nineteen years. And then we've changed it. So I, I don't think it's that errorless. It's not that much extra work to put it in. But majority rules here, like I said, I, Mayor Martin, you and I attended that one community input meeting and the rest of council, it was the summertime and they were on holidays. I'm not blaming anyone, but I'll tell you, you and I attend a lot of meetings and, and it was reminded, people want to know where the rest of council were. People are watching us. And, you know, now my feelings.
Can't have community input meetings at this point either. So Counselor Krebitz?
Oh, I'd just say, I, I like the straight salary, the way it's set up now. I think that's something that should have been done a long time ago. Perhaps we could do a review of the amounts at a one-year anniversary time. We could do a review similar to Malahide, did an external review even. That's something that could be a possibility. And as far as keeping the attendance of meetings, I think we should schedule an election in two years. Decide if we show up at meetings.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Yes, I think that, 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 that's been done. Counselor Krebitz? Well, certainly at budget time, we could discuss even as part of the budget, our budget meeting, whether council's remuneration should change.
Um, just one thing, again, to tracking those committee meetings is at the beginning of our term, when we get our committees, we're usually very busy with those committees. And so we can be attending a lot of meetings. As our term moves on, some of those committees drop off because those issues have been dealt with. So you could, I could, we could get to an end of the year and three of my committees could have dropped off. And so I could be sitting there looking like I'm not doing anything. And whereas others are doing more. So I don't think that committee meeting is a true reflection as well. Because the other thing is, nobody knows how much time I'm spending at home or how many phone calls I've taken or how many emails I've, I've replied to or who I've spoken to when I'm in the grocery store or the liquor store or I'm walking my dog or, like, it just goes on and on and on. So I, I, again, I understand, I just don't think, I think it's work. I don't think it gives a true reflection of what each of us are doing as well. So I, I would be happy to just leave it at our flat salary.
Okay. And we certainly can during budget look to see if we want any change in that. Have you, did you read the motion? I can't even remember.
No.
No, you haven't read the motion yet.
No, we already voted on it. We already voted.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. This was brought, you're right. This is Deputy Mayor Marks wanted to discuss it further after the, so. Now, we're at Linda Street now. Would you read the motion on Linda Street, please?
Motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Row, that council direct staff to reconstruct Linda Street as per option two as per report ICOS thirty twenty twenty, Linda Street Norman subdivision.
Comments or questions? Counselor Row?
I would just like to comment that this little box on my Google Maps shows about ten homes. There's always been the policy of kind of focusing on roads where there is a decent amount of homes, I guess. Anyway, so in my mind, if anything other than option two is done in this case, I would argue that there are at least two streets in Port Stanley that have been requesting road repairs. requesting road repairs over the last few years, at least since I know Jameson and Orchard, that are possibly in the same or worse shape as Linda Street. I've never been on Linda Street, so I don't really know what it looks like. But all that the other two streets have gotten in the past is patching. And I would be hard pressed to understand why we would spend any more than the minimum here if it isn't done on those two roads.
Mr. Brooks, would you like to respond to that?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I agree with Counselor Rowe, and that's why we're recommending option two, which is the cheapest option available to the municipality.
Any other thought that I had, Mr. Brooks, and I don't know if it's feasible or not, would be, do people actually drive down? Are they required? Do they require this as a road? I wondered about just putting a four-foot walkway across there. I don't know. You know more of how it's used.
That was considered, and that was an option that we looked at. However, in order to close Linda Street, we would need to provide turnarounds at the end of the two adjacent streets. And constructing the turnarounds with the dead-end barricades that would be required are actually more expensive than paving three and a half meter wide strip down Linda Street. So that vehicles can access and turn around, especially when you're looking at emergency services, equipment, garbage trucks, snowplows, et cetera.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Marks.
Well, I'm all in favor of doing the cheapest one. Like, I know where it is. Like, just over here, I almost look at it. And it's, it's a, the gully there, that, that I wouldn't want to spend a lot. If you shut it down, you're not going to really inconvenience anyone. It's, it's a very, I'm assuming very low travel. The neighbors go home. Do we actually have to do the turnaround? Can't we just, like a dead-end road? And then just have a walkway to connect pedestrians, people walking around the block sort of thing. But I certainly the least amount of money to spend on it. Two, two roads there, they go home and they're there.
Through you, Madam Mayor, in response to Counselor Deputy Mayor Marks. I don't believe we have a legal obligation to provide a turnaround at, at those two streets, but the only way to maneuver the vehicles around and we do snowplow and we do use, we do have garbage trucks down there day or weekly would be to turn around in the private driveways. So I would recommend if we do close it, that we do construct enough space for the vehicles to turn around within the right away.
Are you saying that our garbage trucks do use that Linda Street?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Kravitz, you had a question?
No, I was just going to say that and for emergency vehicles as well. If something was to happen, there's two accesses to those properties at this point. So I'd like to remain, I like the option two as well. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, would you, you've read the motion. We'll have the call, the vote done, please. For option two is what we're supporting, single lane. Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
No.
And Mayor Martin? Yes. The resolution carries. Thank you. And now we're looking at automated garbage carts. You'll notice that Mr. Brooks revised. Would you like to explain your revisions to the financial statements, Mr. Brooks?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so maybe I'll explain some of the changes that have been made since the presentation to the steering committee last week. So I would turn council's attention to page three of the report. And there is a table there outlining our operating costs of both the bag tag program as well as the proposed automated cart program. Item number four on the list there are, are dumpsters. So what makes up our, our, well, let, let me start saying, so in this current report with the current costs, I've got $15,000 shown in for the bag tag program. And the costs that make up that $15,000 are two condo developments in Port Stanley where the garbage trucks currently can't access properly. So historically, the municipality has been providing those condo corporations with dumpsters and paying for the, the collection. Going to an automated cart program beyond, you know, with a user pay program, I've brought that cost down to zero. So because the, the other residents in Central Augen would be paying as a user pay program, those condo developments at that point should also be paying as a user pay program, whether it be through the municipality's contractor or the condo corporation wishes to contract that service out themselves. So that's where I've made the change. When I presented this, these operating costs to the steering committee last week, I was carrying $110,000 in both the bag tag program as well as the automated cart program. So where that $110,000 came from is we also have dumpsters at municipal facilities such as the Belmont Arena, the Port Stanley Arena, the Beach, White Station, among others. And that cost has been previously paid for through the solid waste program. But because I believe that the cost for the dumpsters at the Belmont Arena, for instance, that should be an operating cost of the Belmont Arena rather than a solid waste cost that would be funded through the solid waste budget. So that's where the, the majority, that's where the difference comes in compared to what I presented last week. We've taken that hundred thousand, $110,000 out. And that's where you get to the reduced price per, per cart. And I'll just say for the 120-liter cart, that brought our cost down that I presented last week from $103 per year, down to $85 per year. So that's, that's where the difference in cost comes in from what I presented last week.
Thank you. Questions for, on this, Counselor Fair?
I've, I've gotten some interesting, interesting arguments about this as far as the user pay. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we were user pay already. It's just been added into our taxes. So, so are, we're really not changing much and we're gradually over two years moving down to a lower cost. Am I correct in that or am I wrong?
Certainly the users are paying, whether it's a tax that they pay or separate item, it's, they're paying for it both ways. It just, this would be one upfront cost, like once a year, or instead of coming out of your taxes every time you pay taxes. Counselor Fair?
The only other thing I wondered about, the proposal said that we would put a cart fee in there to pay for the carts annually for the next 10 years. So that would mean that the taxpayer is purchasing the original cart plus they're buying another cart over 10 years. I'm just wondering if it would be more saleable, if you will, if it was just the one card over 10 years and at the end of 10 years, then another replacement would have to be put into the budget or proposal done to replace the cart down the road as, as opposed to doing 10 installments.
Anyone else have comments or questions? Counselor Rowe and then Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes, I just wanted to, I have also had various people ask me some questions, one in particular. And they're, they had sort of three questions or three concerns, I guess. One was, is the speed of the cart pickup truly faster than someone manually grabbing a bag and throwing it in? Because if you kind of watch the video, it's got to, got to go around the cart, then it's got to lift it up and then it has to dump it, then it has to put it back down again. So just visually, it just doesn't look if it, that it saves a whole lot of time. The second question was around if there is something that is an issue that this cannot go forward, is there the ability to extend the lease an additional six months, at least to give us a little bit more time, similar to what we had to go through with the, the transition for the garbage? And then the blue water recycling, the third question was really that blue water recycling company was mentioned, I think, in the, with the steering committee anyway. And so that was picked up from the residents and they were just curious about how that program really works and how, what is being suggested here truly, truly compares to that operation. So.
Mr. Brooks?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Rowe. So the first question there was whether the pickups are faster. There are numerous studies out there suggesting that the automated collection system is faster. There was, I've got a document on my desk from the Continuous Improvement Fund that did a study. It, it relates a little bit different. It, it was studying the pickups of recycling compared to an automated system and it's, it, it was proven to be quite a bit faster. There are other, there's other information on the internet as well that you can find suggesting that it is, the automated system is the fastest system available right now. Not to mention that it's more efficient in that we don't have as many workplace injuries. The second question about the extended lease. So we do have the rear packer that we're using for garbage collection now. An extended lease is not available to us as the, the rental company does want that truck back before it gets too much wear and tear on it. But we do believe that there would be a short-term lease available on a rear packer truck, whether that be six months or, or a year. So that option is available to the municipality. And then the third question in, in regards to blue water recycling. I guess I can't outline what their, they, they have a cart system for solid waste collection as well as a cart system for recycling to their residents. I believe from what I, the information that I've gathered, the recycling is actually paid through, through the general taxes, similar to what the municipality does. And the solid waste is a user pay program. Their smallest cart size is 120-liter cart. And for those residents that have weekly collection of that cart available to them, it's $100 per year for that 120-liter cart. As compared to what I'm proposing here, the, the cost to residents in Central Augen for 120-liter cart would be $85 per year. So by the looks of things, we're about $15 cheaper than what Blue Water provides to the residents west of here.
One question, Mr. Brooks, with the dumpsters in the condos, how do we deal with recycling in the condos?
I believe that the recycling in the condos is piled in blue boxes and is put out curbside.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we're doing it. So, Counselor Fair?
One, when we had this discussion, we talked about getting public input. If we go ahead and vote on this and approve to start at beginning of June or end of June, that, that's really not honestly giving public input. So I'm wondering how we're going to address that.
Mr. Brooks?
Well, in order to move forward with this program, considering the budget timelines that we have, there, there wouldn't be public engagement available to us before the decision was made to get us going in time for the 2021 budget. What I can say is a year and a half ago, when we looked at moving the garbage or solid waste collection in-house from the contracted services, this, the bin program was introduced to the public at that time. I'm not sure that we went quite as far as we are right now as far as introducing a price per, per home to residents, but it, it was introduced to them back in 2019.
Deputy Mayor Marks, then Counselor Winn?
I think there's still some confusion. Like, the rate pairs through the tax base have been paying for garbage pickup. Now I, correct me if I'm wrong, but now we're identifying how much it's going to cost. So that, but they're not really going to get a bill for it, are they? They're, you know, if it costs them $85, they're just going to be aware of it. And it sounds like all we're, all we're doing is mechanizing the pickup. We're here and it's cheaper and it's faster, certainly safer. Looks like we're, you know, saving money. But I think there's some people, they're thinking that they're going to get a bill. I think there's some confusion there. They will know how much they're paying for garbage. It's not a new charge.
It's, they will, they will be paying this $85. It won't be spread out over all their tax bills. It'll be
Can we have that clarified? Because I'm not clear on that.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Brooks or Mr. Leach? You're both.
Oh, oh, I'll, I'll start here through you, Madam Mayor. It would become a full user pay program. So I would like to clarify that this program is cheaper and that's the main focus of proposing this program is because it is a cheaper program for the municipality regardless of whether it's user pay or it's, or it's not. But yes, to, to answer your question, it would be a user pay system where an additional fee would be, would be placed now. This would be taking, this total cost of this cart program would be taken out of the general taxes. So general taxes would not be funding this program anymore. It would be a user pay program. And we tailor this program towards what residents' needs are. If they want a larger cart, they pay a little extra for a larger cart. And if they want a smaller cart, they're going to pay a little bit less for a smaller cart. So that's really how we control what the cart sizes are and what the user fees are, is by directly billing the, the fee to the, the customer.
It's too late. I just said that, that, that's, that's correct. That it must be remembered that the cost of the waste management, the garbage collection would come off the taxes and be replaced or funded by this user fee. And, you know, going back in time, this was the way Yarmouth Township, before amalgamation finance, they had a user fee that was recovered on taxes. It wasn't paid for by property taxes for their waste management system. So that's going back. Actually, I think it was a much higher fee, you know, 20 some years ago. So costs were much higher at that point. But it is a user fee. It's, it's similar to the system in the city of Toronto and similar to the system in some much smaller municipalities in the adjacent Middlesex, Lantin, Huron counties with both blue water recycling and different contractors' waste management. And a number of municipalities have gone to this system, most recently in rural areas. But something that as a user pay system works, both large municipalities like Toronto and, and smaller ones that are rural or, or mixed like Central Augen.
I remember when it was user pay for Yarmouth. It was listed right on your taxes, a flat amount at the January or whatever the first tax. Go ahead, Tom.
But I'm assuming but we, we won't be getting a bill. We'll be paying it when we pay our taxes.
Yes.
And for most of us, the average was 120. If we go with the average, we're probably going to be paying less, is what I'm hearing. It's not, it's not going to be a new fee.
No, it just won't be spread out over the year. It'll be once.
Identified.
It's not a new fee. It's an actually decrease in fee.
Yes, that's not a bad thing. And if, if in the future with today's technology, I've been, like Bob McKay told us about this years ago, that we can put a barcode on that. And if you've got 39 pounds of garbage, this stuff maybe we'll probably grow into, but we will actually pay what we use. And if you've got $17 and only that much in the bin, well, that, that's a possibility down the road, is it not, Mr. Brooks?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Deputy Mayor Marks, that is an option that could be considered down the road. Each cart will be supplied with an RFID tag that is readable by the, the the solid waste truck. And that's an option that council could, could consider down the road. I wouldn't suggest that we do it right away here as it requires billing staff and all the other things that go along with it. But as technology progresses, that may be something that's an option to the municipality where it's a more automated, efficient program than having billing assistants look after those tonnages.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'll ask Diane to call the, oh, you have the motion there, you need.
I have prepared, based on the recommendation from Mr. Brooks' report. The final bullet, though, needs to, staff needs direction on your allotment of tags for next year.
So where we were, are we still giving the full, like we decided to up the tags a bit? Are we still giving all those, but we're only, we're not even having half the year, we're only having five months? Should we just give them half that amount of tags? I still give them several extra, but and then provide the bin the first of June instead. And what what are your thoughts? Sorry. Counselor Winn.
Um, I I would recommend that we give the equivalent of the five or six months, whatever it's going to be. So we give it half or whatever those that five months would equate to.
Other thought?
Because, um, sorry. Just because there's, people will still have an opportunity to use bag tags after this.
No, no, not once.
So that will be it. So you've you've got your bin and you put what you've got in that bin, that's it.
Yes. Brooks, you wish to speak to that?
Yeah, may I suggest to council that I I've provided three options for council to consider here in the report. And with all the options, the tags that we will be distributing for 2021 would become void in the event that we go ahead with a cart program. But may I suggest to council that we reduce the tags proportionally to the week of August 27? That gives us a little bit of leeway in the implementation date. We're kind of in uncertain times here right now. And that just provides a couple of months of cushion for that start date to be implemented. So that would result in residents receiving 4291, 42 residential tags, 91 commercial tags and 19 farm tags. Rather than i- if we're delayed a couple of weeks on the on these bins or even a month, then we have to go through a whole nother redistribution program for the the garbage tags. So I I'm suggesting that we reduce proportionally to August 27.
Counselor Fair.
One other thing that should be noted is we did change it to 64 tags for 2021. Given that the 120 cubic size bin is one and a half of the bags, that means we're giving the equivalent of 78 tags by going to the bin program. So so we are even increasing the volume.
Yeah, that's why I I I'm still asking Mr. Brooks to come up with a, an option for the smaller cart so that those of us who don't produce and would never use that size of cart can have the smaller ones. Deputy Mayor Marks, you had something you wanted to say.
I think we need to have a campaign to educate the people. We want to reduce garbage, but we need some flexibility. If if I sleep in or get called away and I forget to put my garbage out, what do you do next week? You need some flexibility. That's, we have that. No, but we have that now with bag tags. You can put six out if you want on one day. We, so we want to educate people. We don't want them to fill the thing, but we need a little bit of room in there for someone who misses a pickup.
Pardon me? Oh, their carts back here, samples?
Yeah, yeah.
Have a look and see.
The smaller one, is that 90 or 80?
80 to 95, he had said he wasn't sure.
Yeah, so there is, I I thought there was a smaller option for us, so.
There's going to, yeah, Mr. Brooks, go ahead.
Yeah, so I've, sorry, I forgot to mention this earlier. I wheeled two carts into the council chambers. And the two carts that you're looking at, the small one being an 80 liter cart and the larger one being the 120 liter cart.
Okay, Counselor Rowe.
Thanks. I would just say that there are a lot of logistical issues, I guess, to getting something like this system going. I think Mr. Brooks has done a very good job getting us to this particular point. And we certainly do have to, I think, be conscious of costs. So this appears to be that it does save the taxpayers' money. So I think that's a great thing. But with all of those other logistics that are required, I have to believe that staff would be coming back to council. Let's say every me, council meeting between now and June with some other question to to validate or get approval on regarding this particular program. So I would just look forward to that closeness, I guess, to make sure that all of the the logistics are in place as much as possible by June 1st. So good idea, but there's still lots to do and I think we should still move forward.
Okay, good. Counselor Kravitz.
I'd like to suggest that we go with the suggestion of the August 27th end date, doing those amount of tags. And when the program does start, the tags are void anyways. But explain to the people that we are running the bag program until August 27th is our goal at this point. And hopefully, we can get the cart system in prior to that. So I'd suggest that for the bag tags, please.
Thank you. You've got that. The date. We do, we do want to, in any way we can, encourage people to reduce the amount of garbage they produce. I think that's very important. Certainly. You know, I mean, for someone like me who puts out one garbage bag every eight weeks, I I don't need much of a thing because I I just, that's the way I shop and the way I've always tried to do it. So. But I'd like to, you know, I'd like to be able to give a break for people who don't have, and I'm not talking about just myself. I mean, there are lots of single families out there or couples, seniors that probably don't produce anywhere near a bag and a half of garbage a week for one of those carts. So it would be nice to have the other option. Counselor Rowe or Winn, sorry.
Um, I I agree because we do need to reduce the amount of garbage that we collect. And I think one of the great ways, like I love having the option because I myself too would use the smaller bin. But I think down the road, our ability to help with that is, as Mr. Brooks and I were talking today, they, once the recycling has aspect has been removed, then we can be looking at a green bin system and then a rotating where garbage is picked up one week, green bin is the next week. So your garbage is only being picked up every other week. But you wouldn't want to start something like that too soon. Or my fear would be if we defaulted to a smaller bin, that would cause problems for our staff. So I think the 120 is a great default, but I love having the option of the smaller one and the reduction of garbage is still to come.
Yes, and I agree with that. And and certainly, that's the reason I don't have much garbage because I compost entirely.
Just like to mention with the two bins that are on display here, the, I agree with the 120 being the standard size. Perhaps it's as this, as we work through the process, we can look for a goal for using the smaller one. But it must also be noted that the small one has small wheels and they're hard to handle. When you go to the 120 size, they're easily transportable. And for the issue that Deputy Mayor Marks mentioned, if you do miss a week, you will have room to have enough room for the following week. So I think we do with the 120 as a standard is something we should look at, but offer people the option of going to a small one.
Certainly.
I thought that's.
And that, I think that isn't, like, I think we, this report does say the 120 is the standard and the other will be just
an option.
An option that we will be looking at, as Counselor Rowe said, we'll be continuing to discuss things all along until we get this in place. Any other discussion? If not, would you call, you need to read the motion.
If you'd like just to draft, like if you have drafted something, I need to move her into second.
Oh, Counselor Winn and Counselor Kravitz. Moving in seconding. The recommendations from the report plus.
The addition. Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Winn, seconded by Counselor Kravitz, that the Council of the Municipalities Central Logan approved the recommendation from the Waste Management Steering Committee that the solid waste program to transition to a full user pay system for garbage collection and that the program be transitioned to a cart-based system from the current bag tag system and that the transition to a user pay and cart system be implemented on June the 1st, 2021. And that council direct staff to reduce the 2021 bag allotment proportionately to an August 27th, 2021 end date. And further that the following tag allotments be distributed, be distributed for 2021, 42 tags for residential, 91 tags for commercial and 19 tags for farm.
Would you call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Kravitz.
Yes.
Counselor Fair.
Yes, but should we not note that the tags will expire, be expired when when the system starts? Sorry, I I should have.
I don't know that it has to be in the motion. Does it, Mr. Leach?
No, I don't, I don't believe so because that will be one of those details that will come forward for decisions later on as well about subsequent bag tags and things.
Then, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now, the Grover Drain, which is just appointing. Read that.
Yes, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that Council Point Brandon Widner and Associates to, under section four, section 78 of the Drainage Act, respecting the Grover Drain as per report ICS 3220.
Thank you. Any questions? Call the vote.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Now, building report. Director of Asset Management, the monthly building report, would you read the motion?
Next motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report AMDS 2820, October 2020 monthly building report, we received disinformation.
You'll notice that Mr. Perrin did it in a different format and it's the full year report, which he has confirmed the figures. So anyone have any questions? If not, would you call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Sorry, Counselor Kravitz.
I always want to say I I do like the report with the comparatives. That's a new page and it's easier to read. So thank you, whoever did that.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin, we appreciate it.
I will pass it along.
Okay, the the Don yet Park Boundary Adjustment, would you read the motion?
Motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that report AMDS 2920, property boundary, Don yet Park Belmont, be received disinformation.
Mr. Perrin, did you wish to say anything about that or?
I'm fine for now, your worship, unless there's questions that council has.
Questions? Did not call the vote.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Bylaws?
Motion to take them collectively, Madam Mayor. Counselor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaws 2535, 2536, 2537 and 2538 be taken collectively.
Call the vote.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you.
Next motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that bylaws 2536, 2537 and 2538 be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Final resolution.
Last motion on the bylaws. Counselor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaws 2535, 2536, 2537 and 2538 be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Okay, and do we have any new business? Anyone have Deputy Mayor Marks?
Asked by several residents of the Lynnhurst area to formally thank members of council and senior staff who tuned in on Zoom calls last week. And I think their message come across and they're they're very appreciative. And, you know, I think we indicated we'd probably do some more discussion on this and maybe discuss the budget time, but they just wanted me to pass on that they're very pleased that we took the time to participate and and listen. So hopefully, something good can come of it, so.
Deputy, or sorry, Counselor Fair.
Voted. I I also want to say I I got a number of emails and on that and Lynnhurst, Eastwood all felt now that they were they were listened to and their their opinions were valued. And I I also want to thank everyone who did attend. It was a good attendance and I I think it was a very, very productive, worthwhile meeting.
Thank you. Any other new business? Seeing none? Would you make, read the motion to move into closed?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that council proceed into closed session at 10:00 PM to address a matter pertaining to closed session minutes and proposed to pending acquisition disposition of land and or solicitor client privilege.
Who? On the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
We'll give time. We'll give time.